The SBA, the SBA with us.
Oh man.
He's got lots of them. In the seconds.
You can just.
It doesn't matter. I do?
Yeah.
I never noticed. That's all right. I'm gonna bash him if you can add it.
Everybody ready?
Yes ma'am.
All right, do I have a motion to return from closed session?
Motion to return from closed session.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Whereas the King William County School Board has convened closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative reported act and accordance with the provisions under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two thousand three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this law, by this school board. That such executive meeting was conducted in accordance with the Virginia law. Now therefore made result that the King William County School Board hereby certifies. The best of each member acknowledged, one, only public business matters lawfully consented for moving these products by Virginia law were discussed. In the executive meeting which the certification passed and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting. Mr. Harper?
I certify.
Dr. Lothar?
I certify.
The second?
I certify.
It's for you.
I certify.
Yeah, I certify. Thank you. All right, so um for all who are able, can you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Dr. Wagner, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, folks who are receiving, certainly our guests, our staff members, and those who might be listening or calling, it's all. Uh, no man, are no changes or additions to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. All right, next we have superintendent items with Dr. Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the first item on the agenda is an annual ritual that we need to establish and then. Have a board approve just a regular business meeting days for the following calendar year. Um, we, we approve. These meeting days as far as we can in advance, um. And we do this by calendar year, not by school year. And so I had to share with you your consideration. On the left-hand side for the folks that are, that are, might be watching from home, on the left-hand. Column are the, what is typically the third Tuesday of each month for twenty twenty-five. And assuming that the board would like to continue with that pattern that, you know, that can be easy, um. In the middle column, I know that the school board has been, been in some of these work sessions for us to, to move through some discussion items, so. I have some proposed work session dates on this page that do include some of our already scheduled budget work sessions that were approved, I believe, at one of the recent meetings. But these are of course flexible and they don't necessarily have to be voted on this evening, but I just offered some suggestions. And then in the third column would be, uh, again, just, just a discussion I, uh. Would be whether the board were interested in establishing additional dates for. Uh, additional closed meetings if they were necessary. So I, I think, um, to summarize, what, what I would like the board to do is at least approve. The regular meeting days for that third Tuesday for twenty twenty-five so that we can get that information posted on our website.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll pause, Madam Chair, and. Is there any discussion about that? And you could even talk about start times too, if you want to start at seven or start earlier, you know, that option is available, but.
I would say I wouldn't like to start at six o'clock. Just to get out of here.
I'm fine. I'm okay with it.
Start the public. It's six o'clock. Seven, depending on.
We needed a close session, we could start. At five or we would just adjust the time and then we would just have to post it on the website.
Works for me.
Is that work for you?
It's on a Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just make sure that I'm not doing a group chat, I have to do a group on Tuesdays. Definitely not in Chelsea.
Well, so it would still be the third Tuesday of every month. Yeah, I know, okay.
But when typically when we do groups, we do them. Like right after school, so from three to five, or two hours. So I've just blocked that time on my calendar session.
Okay. All right. So we will make a motion to continue to have our meetings on the third Tuesday of every month, but change the start date to six P M.
Start time.
Yep.
Perfect.
Great. Do we have a second?
I have a second, yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Right.
Be nice.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if the board wants to discuss any of the work session dates, but the first, uh. The first three. Better than that column, I believe, or I'm sorry, three of the four that are in that column are already scheduled, so. There is time to consider work session days if you have to do it this evening, which you can come back and do it at a later time, but I didn't, I didn't know if anybody had any questions or comments about. About any of those minutes.
Um, so definitely not September second. If we can choose a different day. Um. As much as I love y'all, I don't want to share my birthday with you.
You're so selfish.
Um, yeah, I think we can talk about these out, outside of here too, um, that way everybody has a chance to review their calendars.
To look at.
What day are we looking at not doing again?
I mean, I would prefer not to do September second, if that works for y'all, that's fine unless we can find another day.
What day will we set?
It will probably be Labor, it's Labor Day week start, right?
That's what I'm thinking. I don't want to do that anyway.
We'll have to.
Yesterday after Labor Day.
So probably not. Um, could we do? Just look for this out there, I know we don't need to make a decision now, but.
Yeah. Let's look at it. We'll get back.
I mean, could we do it the following week, maybe?
And then we would be two weeks back to back, is that what you want?
I mean.
The ninth and the sixteenth.
It's very difficult for me, so if you don't do it back to back.
Okay.
It's a lot of getting around the room.
Who gives a thirty in?
Well, well, that's.
Yeah, nevermind.
I was thinking something.
Some of these days, things are not here, because we're all hard.
We got to look at it.
For thirty.
We got to look at it.
All right, we'll revisit.
Yeah, there's just too many dates to look at.
Well. I know, I would prefer to do that one, if we have additional work sessions, I. Prefer to do them earlier in the month. And not like after. If I'm.
But I'm thinking that like we did that kind of sort of retreat thing in August. If we did something like that in August. Not necessarily. But if we did something like that in August, maybe we could skip that first, that extra one in September. Because when we did that before, it was kind of a longer day more than just a, you know, retreat type thing was.
Yeah.
Well, we got time, we can look at those.
I will say, so the purpose of also doing this is that. We have these planned before other plans are made, um, so that there's a guarantee that we're all going to be here. Since we have plenty of time, um, in advance.
And the other thing that this hundred cent can do is, because it is. Early, when you're talking about next school year, is it reserves the space?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So maybe just come back.
That's fine.
Or you want to include this on the agenda on the nineteenth perhaps, or wait until December?
December, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the approval of the regular meetings, that's helpful.
We'll try to get you something, um. Sooner too. Okay. Um, I think we did talk about the potential tour dates.
I want, I just wanted to share, second item, potential facility tour dates, looking at, uh, an invitation from the school division to. Obviously the school board, you're always invited, but also to the board of supervisors and the new county administrator. To be able to come tour our schools, and we're looking at December second and third as options, and. I want to make sure that I have your. Nod to move forward with extending that invitation for those days. And, and it's not a command and performance for the school board, but you're certainly welcome to. To join the board supervisor counterparts.
What?
And we can develop a more specific schedule.
What day?
Monday and Tuesday, December second.
First Monday, Tuesday.
And one of the things that we're trying to do is to. Be able to have some conversation with them ahead of the final budget development, so that they sort of know. You know, if there are any capital or larger maintenance projects that we're interested in undertaking, that they have some understanding of what that is.
Okay, um, I'd prefer the third. For myself.
Okay. And we, we might be able to do all four in a day, if folks can. If you like the time.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's like I called.
Just looking at the board members.
No, it's half a day, like, like, hey, it was the morning, it was the afternoon.
I mean, we can do too, if you would like, I just, I would not be in attendance over there.
We could probably do, um, you know, an hour and a half per school, hour and fifteen minutes, tops, you know, and especially if the, you know, high schools. Large and, um. You know, probably lots to discuss there, if you want to talk about restrooms or auditorium or some of the other. You know, the apple land is there, if anybody wants to go out and get a stadium or the fieldhouse, and you could spend, you know, a lot of time there, but we just wanted to.
Yeah.
So we can at least go to the third, now I'll reach out to that group and see if there's time on the second as well.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll follow up with the board.
That works.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, third item, uh, under superintendent, and you may recall some recent conversation and information that I have shared with the board. Over the last couple months about the opportunity for. Public school divisions to join what is shaping up to be a class action. Uh, litigation against social media companies.
Yep.
It's similar in scope and in structure to the class action litigation that was against some of the opioid, uh, or their prescription. Um. Companies that manufacture, uh, opioid prescription medication and some of the abuse there, and. And we have worked at our opioid town hall, uh, last week, which was, you know, which was, which was nice. Um, but nonetheless, we have the opportunity and, uh, all it takes from our school board is a motion and a vote, I think there are. You know, we have to move to move forward with this, but then also to. Uh, award the chair the authority to act on behalf of the board, um, you know, for. Moving forward with, uh, with the school board discipline.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to enter into the attorney-client engagement agreement with Wagstaff and Carton Mill. L F P and its co-counsel for the purpose of retaining those firms for legal services in connection with pursuing claims for damages. Associated with social media litigation, including against Facebook, Meta, Instagram, Snapchat. TikTok, YouTube, and Google, as well as other defendants determined. Um, appropriate by our terms.
Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Do you want to?
I don't care.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion carries. And then the second one.
And Madam Chair, I also move that. Um, a move to grant the board chair, Ms. Lindsay Kaplan, authority to sign the attorney-client engagement agreement. Agree to its terms and identifying the superintendent or designate as the authorized representative of the school board for the purposes of this agreement.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and just for folks that might be listening from home and those that are seated here. Our participation in any kind of. Of legal proceedings is no financial cost to the school division, so all of this is. Is done on a contingency basis by the, uh, law firms that might be representing for the school division, so again, there's no financial cost to the, to the, so thank you very much.
Okay.
And my last item, uh, that is listed here is BSBA proposed legislative priorities for twenty twenty-four. And actually, we included this item at the request of Mrs. Frazier, who is the school board's rep to the BSBA, and Mrs. Frazier, can I turn the. Microphone over to you and you can engage us in what we're looking for with these.
Thank you.
Priorities, thank you.
So, um, every year when we go to the SBA, I, and this year in particular, I serve as the delegate to the legislative assembly. And, um, they always ask us to review the proposed, um, legislative positions, amendments. With our boards so that we all can know what's going to be changed and what's going on, there's a copy of the, um. Delegate handbook. Online, and you should have received a copy or should have received several copies in your email. Uh, board members in the last few days because they have amended it a couple of times. But all of the proposed legislative, um, positions this year, and there are seven of them, but they are all this year just leading up to. Slight verbiage changes in our own, um. Board documents. Okay, so, um, like, one is the assessment to reform accountability. And, um, the funding formulas and just things like that. So what I just need is permission. From the board to vote in your, on your behalf, that we're gonna, we would like to adopt these. Or you would like me to vote to adopt these, or whether you want me to vote not to adopt these. I, I'm at your pleasure, whichever you prefer. Um, again, I think that we all have them, and it's also a copy of the handbook here. When I'm looking over them, I didn't see anything that was really big, any, anything that stood out in my, um. To my attention, most of it again is just verbiage changes where they're correcting, um. Verbiage or English or whatever.
Wow. And, uh, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, I can, if I can clarify a little bit further, this is. Your, your vote to endorse this this evening isn't necessarily for, it is this board's endorsement of the BSBA's position.
Yeah.
So, so this is for both, you know, the BSBA has its own. Uh, lobbyists that work on Capitol Hill, you know, in Richmond General Assembly, and so these are the positions that. The folks that work on your behalf will be taking with the General Assembly, so you'll, you would just be authorizing Mrs. Frazier to vote either for or not for these. Propose.
Um, we, we don't, we need to make a motion to do the nomination for her too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, I will make a motion to nominate Ms. Vida Frazier as candidate or chair to represent us in the regional, um. BSBA.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, and then I make them.
Can I say?
For sure.
Thank you very much for your support and for your trust in me.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Do we need to make another motion for her to be able to vote? For us?
I think as an board rep, she already has that authority.
Okay.
But I just wanted to, wanted to make you aware. That that's, that's what I'll be going into this meeting to do, it's just to.
So the King William agrees with these.
Yeah.
Things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vida.
What? No, no, I knew where I was, I was gonna see if I could move some things around and get it done faster, but we can proceed.
And go ahead.
Right?
Yeah.
If I'm, if I'm hearing the board, Mrs. Rudd, they'd love for you to come to the podium.
Here she comes.
Making that, that, uh, that long walk.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just provide the public, folks that might be listening and the school boards, if we work, we shared reviews of draft performance measures for goal one in our last work session. We're going to continue to do this with our strategic plan to give you the board members an opportunity to re-engage or to stay engaged with our strategic goals. And Mrs. Rudd has identified some performance measures that we feel, um, are worth discussion if you'd like to discuss. And, uh, if we receive the nod from the board like we did last month, then we'll just move forward with. The sort of, you know, incorporating these into our plan and will give us some things to measure against as we move forward, so, Mrs. Rudd, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Five minutes on the clock.
I've got it. All know, goal two, value and invest in attracting, developing, and retaining high-quality people. For our division who support our core values. And we want to start with measurable outcomes, and I have four that I would like to share with you this evening. The first measurable outcome, King William County Public Schools will maintain annual overall teacher retention rate. That is above the state average, and if you remember a few months ago, I visited with you all and shared the fact that the state average of retention was seventy-two percent. And we are very proud here in King William that our retention rate was at ninety percent. So we want to continue to do that for years to come, so you might ask, how will we do that? Well, we want to gain information from our teachers. And if we move on to number two, we will maintain an annual starting salary that's the highest one-third in the school division, or excuse me, the state. And if you look at our data, we are at the thirty-third percent currently. Okay, so as we know that teachers, you know, through exit interviews might say sometimes, well, I'm leaving due to compensation. Well, we've worked really hard as a school division, as a board, our previous board, our finance department, H R department, to advocate for our teachers to make sure that we remain. In that one-third. Okay, so we're committed to doing that moving forward, and we ask you to assist us with that. We are very proud of the fact that our compensation package, along with our benefit package, is one that attracts some of the best teachers in the area. Dr. Wagner, please jump in and assist if you want to add other information as we move through this.
Sure, thank you, and just to share on, on this slide with, with measurable outcome number two. We are in the top third, as Mrs. Rudd said, but just barely, right at, at, at the thirty-third percent mark. Uh, which is the bottom of the top third, um, not, not anything to be chained up, it's, I, I think it's, I think it's better than being in the, in the bottom of the bottom third, so to speak. Um, but for our master's degree. Uh, employee or teachers, and then for those that might hold a doctoral degree, uh, you know, we start to fall a little bit, so you can see. Here, the importance of having a salary scale that we can adjust with fidelity and, and that it's, you know, it's fair and equitable across the board. Um, but these, these data come from the Department of Education when they do an annual salary survey, so we'll probably be reporting this always, you know, with, with sort of year-old data. But it's just good to be aware of where these differences are, so that when we do make. Scale adjustments, we do so in a way that benefits. All teachers, or all employees for that matter. Um, the reason why on this measurable goal, it specifies teacher. Is because the Department of Education, you know, they, they do administrative salaries and teacher salaries, but they don't do any other employee groups, there's lots of variability across other employee groups, but. We're committed. Uh, and I know I speak for Mrs. Rudd and Mrs. Long, as we're committed to helping all of our employee groups have. Compensation that is competitive and that is, um. Fair, and that reflects the hard work that everybody does, even though it might not get reported to the Department of Education, so we're using this. Teacher measurable. Objective or measurable outcome rather, sort of a bell rung for all of the work that we're gonna do over time to enhance employee competition.
And I will say, we're committed to number two, both the H R department, the finance department, we work on this year round, talking with our colleagues and other divisions. Those with whom we compete for teachers, to make sure that we are where we need to be, and we will come back and report to you as the year goes on. Moving on to number three with measurable outcomes, you know, what is another item that we need to consider, and that's why do our teachers stay? So instead of just having exit interviews when folks leave us, when they leave the profession or go to another division. We are going to move to stay interviews, and what our department will do is we will make sure that we. Sit down with folks and we find out the reasons that they stay. You know, what are we doing well, or what are we doing to ensure that you feel valued and appreciated beyond that of just compensation? So we will be doing that this year, we can report back to you some of the common themes or the trends that we might see as well.
Nice.
And then number four, beginning with next year's academic calendar, we're going to expand our new teacher orientation. In the past, our new teacher orientation has been one day, and we are very excited about the fact that we get folks in, they're already on-boarded when they come to us. So they don't have to stress about completing all of the paperwork, the fingerprints, we get all of that done so they can hit the ground running. But we've found with our entire administrative team and our senior leadership team that there are other items that we could go over. And teachers can benefit from a second day. That second day, looking at our student information system, looking at Canvas, how best we can serve our students. And how our teachers can feel prepared when the kiddos first come through the door. So that is our plan for this coming school year, to invite our new teachers for yet a second day of that training that's specific to them. Before everyone else comes back in the building, it gives them that extra one-on-one attention from the admin that will have time with a smaller group to work with them. Any questions or comments so far about the measurable outcomes for goal two? Okay? So let's talk about the progress that we're making. So goal two, two point one, enhance the quality, diversity, and job satisfaction of our workforce. Well, as you all may remember, last year, we had our own job fair. I go to job fairs beginning in October, and there are other folks that go with me, other members of our leadership who might go, who attend different job fairs. But we found that housing or hosting our own job fair. Is very beneficial, people are comfortable coming to us, they know us. We have a day where we interview for any opening that we might have, and we were very successful last year when we had our job there. And we've decided this year, let's have two. So we're gonna wait until after the school year, or excuse me, after January, when we know when. Our folks that are planning to retire, and we hope that that's not a large group. But when we know about the vacancies that we have, we could host two job fairs of our own. Last year, not only did we hire teachers, but we also hired members of our support staff in that job fair as well. Okay, I'm very excited about the next bullet. As you know, we have, um, in the past few years had teachers come to us. That have had that less than a traditional track. Okay, those who are not necessarily in a teacher prep program, they are college graduates, but they've decided with the. They are college graduates, but they've decided with the expertise they gained in college that they want to become a teacher. But that's not a quick fix. There are classes that they have to take, there are professional studies that they have to complete before they are a licensed teacher with us. But with that, that's an expense. It's another expense to them, and it's one that we try to help with. But our funds are not, you know, so that we can pay for every single thing that teachers have to encounter. So, we have partnered with a university that's going to work with us with those professional studies classes that our new teachers, who are perhaps career switchers or recent college graduates, they can take those classes. There are six, there are four-week classes that they can take online. And if we partner with them and register with them right away, they will get a huge benefit. Currently, what we pay in tuition reimbursement for the, for classes, the classes will pretty much be free. You know, the teachers can sign up, they get the, the benefit of the discount. And then if they pass the class and show us that they've passed said class, they will get all of their money back. So, that is a huge win for us, and it's something that the teachers are, our new teachers are less stressed about. Um, you know, they think about, they have to take certain praxis tests before they're eligible to take said courses, but this university is gonna partner with us right away.
Yeah, sounds like a wonderful benefit.
Yes, we are really excited about this. Um, and I will say that, uh, one of our administrators, and I'll just say her name because she would be happy to share with you, she was here tonight, Riley Langford was a part of this program in the past, and she said that it was extremely helpful. The university worked closely with her, and it just provided less stress for her while she was trying to manage the day-to-day of a classroom and then taking classes online as well. So, we are very excited about this opportunity. We'll get our teachers through quicker as well. Any questions or comments so far? Okay, so, we're gonna move on to two point two. Increase and sustain employee high retention rates. We've talked a little bit about this. But what are some other things that we can do so our teachers feel valued and their concerns and their celebrations are heard? So, this fall, we have had coffee talks at every single school. We've had coffee talks at Impact as well. And basically, what that means is the HR department, we, we shut our office and the ladies up front cover us, and we go sit and spend time in the building with our teachers and other employees. We bring some snacks and some coffee, and they come and chat with us about whatever they may want to chat about. Some of them come and talk about retirement, some of them come and talk about, hey, you know, have you ever thought about doing this? Or this would really boost morale, and it's just a time for us to chat and for us to be available to them. They really appreciated it, and it's so funny, some of them watch their calories and they don't want the snacks, but they make sure they come by and say, thank you for just coming. It means a lot that you, you came and that you put this on for us. So, we're, it's something that we've done in the fall, and we plan to continue on. Um, this past year, we created a new teacher of the year and retiree reception, and some of you all attended that with us. The teachers and the families were so appreciative of that program. I'd like to give a shout out to Amber. I mean, Amber and Brooke Davis really took that on and made sure that it was something that we could all be proud of, and they set the bar high, and, and we're gonna continue to do it next year. We also recognized a VDOE Rise Award Honorary, as you all are aware, and we hope to have more opportunities for that moving forward. We've also discussed, um, having a situation where we can not only recognize our teachers' years of services or years of service in the building, but have something perhaps at the end of the year where, where we can recognize the folks who have served for and with us for many years and recognize their donation of their time and their, um, service that they have given to us, regardless of whether it's in the classroom, at the bus garage, driving a bus. We would like to recognize those folks who have given to King William for many years. So, perhaps we do so with a penning ceremony.
Good idea.
And then, as you all know, um, we have implemented advisory groups, or Dr. Wagner has made sure that we have broadened that scope. In the past, we had teacher advisory groups, but now we have parent advisory groups, student advisory, and support staff, and we'd like to meet with them more often. It's not just Dr. Wagner who meets with those groups, members of his cabinet are there as well. Um, and, you know, I, I will say that our, those folks who participate appreciate the time. They have participated and they continue to come back, so we're thankful for their input and their feedback. Any questions about two point two?
No.
All right, two point three, engage all employees in relevant job-infested and differentiated professional development. Okay, we hope by June of twenty twenty-five that we will identify a division-wide professional learning plan. Teachers like structure, they like to know what's coming, they want to know what the plan is, and they want to know that it's consistent. And that's what we're here to deliver. Simply put, I mentioned before that we would like to have a two-day teacher onboarding or orientation, and that's to ensure that our new teachers are not overwhelmed and that they want to stay and continue to serve our kiddos. And then finally, central office leadership will participate in training in order to better support building-level leaders with behavior challenges. I will say, our very own Ms. Waldron has been working on a grant that we hope that we will have some support with said grant, so we can take other members of our leadership team, the instructional leadership team that often goes into the building to support, and we have a principal who's out. I'll just say, for example, if, if Ms. Wilken is sick tomorrow, someone from the central office might go in and serve as an administrator. So, you would think if that's our model, we need to ensure that the admin on this hall also receives training so we can best serve our kids in their absence. So, Ms. Waldron is working on that opportunity for us, so we can better be trained to help our admin when they are out of the building. So, those are just a few things that we're working on to promote or increase our retention and hire the best staff possible.
Thank you for sharing.
Questions or comments?
Sounds good. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd.
All right. Next, we have school bus transportation. Um, will somebody, are you doing it?
Okay.
We are happy to have Ms. Waldron here. She's been a huge part of this endeavor, along with Mrs. Rudd and Mrs. Long and Mrs. Dover to sort of, you know, help us, help us, uh, identify challenges, successes, and unfortunately, we've come with a negative season. But Ms. Waldron, thank you for investing your time and sharing this with us.
Of course. Um, so, a little background, we were asked to kind of give you an update of where we are with transportation. So, a vast majority of our school divisions, um, along with KW CPS are facing challenges with recruitment and retention. Um, we're most grateful for our drivers who continue to be committed, um, and interest, have a, commit their time and interest to helping our students. Uh, with that being said, we are dealing with, um, fewer substitute drivers than in the past. A shortage of drivers and substitutes due to illness impact the time required to transport students to and from school. Um, occasionally, the bus, the department's having to utilize maintenance and, um, bus garage staff to cover open routes, which impact those responsibilities as well. And some of this plays into effect when athletics comes into place, and athletics has runs that need to leave at two, but then we have buses that need to run at three. Um, student behavior is probably another issue that we really are dealing with on school buses that can be a, a challenge. Um, especially when the buses approach its capacity of only one adult, whose primary responsibility is forward-facing safe operation. And we're gonna talk through some numbers. Um, daily mileage, so we have thirty-five plus daily bus routes. We cover two thousand twenty-seven miles driven on, per school day. We have ten car drivers that we are driving out of county students for a total of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five miles per day. The bus garage is responsible for forty-five day inspections. That's a code requirement. Uh, routine maintenance, annual inspections, tire rotations, and placement, and brake replacements. Um, staff-wise, we're sitting at thirty-four bus drivers, two substitutes, two bus mechanics, and ten car drivers. All right, so on ten twenty-one, as I started trying to prepare for the budget, um, I came back from my training that I went to in, um, September, and it was a, a big topic of the, um, trainings were about, um, bus situations. So, we're not alone in this. It's a nationwide problem. And so, to get ahead of this and try to think through things differently, um, for our budget process, on ten twenty-one, we had a brainstorming session with transportation, finance, and human resource to really prioritize challenges and generate potential solutions. Some of the brainstorms that came out, um, offering sign-on bonuses, offering referral bonus, allowing dual positions, increase compensation, accelerate the AC installation on the buses, provide an aid for certain routes, increase substitute recruitment and pay, long athletic versus field trips, um, release time versus trip time, offer training after hours, recruit coaches and team parents as drivers, tier or stagger school start times, school discipline on school buses, improve the response time and follow-up on the communication with the drivers. So, some of the numbers I had on transportation pull for me was for the elementary runs. So, in elementary bus, we consider a seventy-seven passenger to be three seats to three people to a seat. For the elementary runs, that's doable as elementary kits are smaller. So, if you can see on this screen, you have the bus number in the first column, the capacity of the bus. So, we currently have sixty-four and seventy-seven passenger buses. We're moving to seventy-seven passengers across the board. So, every bus that we have in the procurement pipeline is a seventy-seven passenger unless they're a special bed bus. Um, the number on the, number on roster, so that's the number that said that they could possibly ride the bus at some point. And there's an AM, and then the next column has AM. Now, these dates, my understanding, were pulled from a DOE report, um, during the week, uh, October eleventh through something, sixteenth or something. It was a point in time, and it was a date that she had to go ahead and report this information to DOE. So, I just asked for a moment in time, a moment in time. And so, then the next column is number of roster, the PM, and then the PM number. So, the elementary runs with three to a seat. Some of them are, are rather high, but most of them are, are reasonable. So, you can see, um, eighty-four percent of, um, kids that are said to ride the bus, ride it in the morning, and about eighty-three percent of them ride it in the afternoon. So, um, those numbers are, are pretty high. So, as we add students to the district, you know, so, say Cool Spring registers two today and two tomorrow. I mean, those four kids then get placed on one of these buses. So, it's a revolving door of kind of, of, of trying to keep this data straight. Now, let's go to secondary. So, if we have three, three kids to a seat, as you can see, looking at the total numbers, we're, our numbers are okay. Seventy-two percent ride in the morning and sixty-eight ride in the afternoon. Well, as you can imagine, three high schoolers to a seat, or three middle schoolers to a seat, may be a little too crowded. So, what we try to do here at King William, and you'll slip to the next slide, is try to keep two to a seat for the middle school and high school runs. So, as you can see, there's quite a few, um, that I highlighted red. So, when you add two students to a seat instead of three, the capacity goes from seventy-seven to fifty-five, and then from sixty-four to forty-three. So, then you see that there are rostered kids, there are five buses that have more on the roster than what we would say is two to a seat. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight that are PM-wise, what we would consider over the numbers. The thing is, all five of these, ma- most of, all five of them on the AM side and one or two of them on the PM side are all neighborhoods. Three or four of those buses are dropping kids within three to five minutes of leaving the high school. So, yes, they're very crowded, but they're going straight across the light, and they're starting to drop at the apartments, or they're dropping at McCauley Park, or they're dr- you know, drop. Um, one of the buses that goes to the Caroline Line is dropping kids, um, soon as it gets across the line after those neighborhoods, is dropping them down thirty. So, yes, these are, are high quali- are high numbers on buses, but min- mi- most of these routes are dropping kids within three to five minutes of leaving the high school parking lot. But when we're talking big, pick, big picture and moving forward, as kids move into the district, we don't know what, what the family next door is gonna move in, whether they're gonna have all high schoolers or if they're gonna have all middle schoolers. So, with this being said, this is alarming to know that at any point in time, we're gonna have to put another high school bus on the road to try to accommodate some of this, which will then move some of the routes around. So, just kind of to put it into numbers for you. So, in summary, um, ridership numbers can really fluctuate. High school students play sports and they start driving. So, they may ride for freshman sophomore year, and then they start driving, so then they drop off the bus. Students move in and out of the county. We, we may gain two, but we lose one in the same day or in the same week. And then students opt to, um, or not to ride the bus. And so, at this point, I think I'm done. Um, what questions do you have? What additional information would you like to see? Um, I kind of put this together based on Dr. Wagner's request, um, and ran it by Tony because he's been out.
Can, can we go back to the, um, brainstorming slide? If you can slide this real quick, and?
Yeah, I wanna know what our short-term and long-term goals could be with this, too.
Well, I wanna know, how many buses do we have in order now?
Um, five.
Five? That we don't know where they're coming, they're just, and we, and we have, how many buses? We also have a number of those five that are already plotted to replace, right?
Yeah, so, the big push that we had, um, the big push was to try to replace those buses we're having the engine issues with. Um, I do foresee me coming to you this year and asking to increase our bus count only because of the lead time. So, the bus that we got approved by the Board of Supervisors last week, we ordered before the price increase on November first. I mean, we're being told it could be a year before we get it.
Well, I think with the, the growth in the county too, in the next year or so, I mean, I think we're gonna need to already start planning for that, which then we'll also need to find drivers, so whatever.
So, this year, we did add a sped bus to our fleet, a sped bus and a driver. We did have to move some rides around this year. Just when we lost, we did lose two bus drivers within a couple weeks of each other. Um, but we're working on trying to get that going. I know the transportation team is really trying to in- increase the number of training sessions we're having. We talked through the brainstorming, like offering some in the evenings. We've even talked to, um, Dr. Wagner, um, Tina, and I talked about like, maybe even going to talk to the spring or the winter parent groups to see if we could talk parents into maybe helping with athletic runs, like, go through the bus training to, to do that. We have a few. Um, like we have a state trooper that drives a bus in the evenings for routes and things like that. Um, and so it's been successful for us in that aspect. So just trying to continue to communicate the importance of why we need them. And even trying to get more coaches, I mean, if coaches would consider it.
I'm probably not a great driver, but Mr. Catlett would drive to and from sport.
We'll sign him up.
He has his earphones in.
Uh, Mrs. Captain, in response to your, your question, I, I will say that when we were looking at the, at the challenges, the brainstorm list really is sort of built around recruitment and retention because it, if we, we don't want to lose the drivers we have because it's hard to get replacement drivers, you know?
Yeah.
Like with teachers, you know, we, we're, we're, we're always looking for substitute teachers. Um, fortunately, we're, we're essentially fully staffed all the way around, but you know, like spad of illnesses could, you know, could knock us out on any given day. But one of the challenges, you know, when we talk about not wanting to lose any drivers, what are the things that we can address right away? And one of the, something that, that Mr. Stone has worked on is putting a second adult on some buses where the driver is frustrated with student behavior because we would want there to be a situation where someone were frustrated and then walk away if we can resolve that issue. And that, that might not be a compensation issue, that might be a supervision issue, or just having the additional adult. If, there's a cost associated with that, and in some cases, we may need to, to hire additional support staff to do that temporarily or, you know, on a part-time basis. Um, but when you saw some of the charts of bus capacity, one of the reasons why I think that's justifiable is because, you know, we wouldn't put thirty children in a first-grade class with one adult. But yet we put sixty children on a bus with one driver, and that driver has to face one. And, and so I, you know, so I think, I think we can do some work there where we identify areas where more supervision is needed, and that helps, you know, keep, uh, keep a driver from not getting frustrated, you know, and, and improve student behavior. I think that's a step in the right direction. So I, I just wanted to share that, that we're looking at the things that he can do right now to, to keep the team that we have. And then over time, we can look at things like compensation and um, signing or referral bonuses. We'd love to be able to pay employees, you know, a, a stipend or a referral, you know, for, could be even for a teacher that they bring into the supervision or a driver or a custodian, it doesn't matter, we evaluate all employees. So I'll just pause there and, and, and let y'all continue.
We already have dual positions, correct? We have some that drive buses and work in cafeterias.
Not, so those were grandfathered in. The, we have one or two that were grandfathered in to allow to do that. Um,
Why did we do away with it?
I don't think the hours work well for the need. Um, but we do have dual roles and the, that thought that summer with ESS, and then we have bus drivers. But this was really, um, there are some VRS changes that would allow a teacher to also be a bus driver. Um, and they could get, um, VRS on both positions. Um, we, we talked at length about some of that, some of that, um, Caroline is doing it this year, and I'm, I'm work closely with Marcia Stevens to try to learn from that process. Um, it's really hard when there's after-school commitments or before-school commitments or duty commitments and things like that. Um, so that's something that we are gonna be looking at, um, going forward. But then, you know, we do have, I would say, four off the top of my head, bus drivers that are teachers that are certified. Um, but I'm not sure without asking them if they would even be interested. Now, if it was open up to others to be allowed to kind of get training and do, but at some point, we would have to figure out because if everyone at Cool Spring wanted to be a bus driver, that would be great. But then the other side of that, who does duty? Who has, how do you do leadership meetings? How do you do PD? There's a lot of little variables that we kind of need to think through. And, um, you know, Caroline rolled it out this year because of their shortage and, and there's, you know, there's every advantage has disadvantages. And so we're just trying to learn from that to understand. But I will tell you, there have been times that Tony's had to call two teachers at the high school and say, can you run an evening route because I have no one? And so then we're covering down their classrooms so they can go get a bus and get ready and, you know? And so they have from time to time done that, but it's not something that they're doing on a regular basis currently.
So in your, um, advisory meetings with support staff and teachers, can you throw that idea out there to see what their feedback would be?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions, discussion? No.
Okay, all right.
And I think you're still up.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, we had a town hall meeting on October twenty-fourth. Um, we were low attendance. Um, but what I, but all the information from the town hall meeting was put on, on the website for review. I have not received any questions. Um, but wanted to quickly kind of talk through, um, the budget survey results. Um, and so I'm gonna go to slide thirty-one. Many of this is some of the same information we provided at the town hall um, last year, just updating the information. Um, and you'll see all of this, um, as we move through, um, the budget process again this year. Um, so budget survey results. So we administered a budget survey from October first through, I want to say, the eighteenth. Um, we did not have as much attendance this time as we did last year. Um, but there were a lot more comments to kind of talk through and work through. So, um, we had thirty responses. Um, parent or guardian made up about sixty-three percent of those responses. Um, of that, it was, um, ten from the high school, seven from Hamilton Homes, six from Aquinton, and five out of, out of Cool Spring. Um, from the King William employee side, you can see here, um, from the employee side, it was kind of pretty much even a little bit more, no, pretty much even. Um, and then their roles. So teacher made up about fifty-five percent of their positions as employees. Um, potential investment areas that they really talked about were, um, and this was in a box that you kind of checked your responses. So teaching and learning, um, smaller class sizes was the outlier. Next to that was, um, extracurricular activities, school safety, strengthening employees, um, and then expanding CTE and work pa- workplace learning. Additional investment recommendations was music electives, considering streams, ITRTs to provide STEM instructional resources, teacher professional development and coaching, extracurricular activities at Hamilton Homes, small class sizes, expanding performing arts, pre-K inclusion program, build an auditorium, build a new elementary school near the King William and Caroline border, more support for teacher mental health, lower the teacher-student ratio for IUP students, and orchestra classes for elementary and secondary. Potential cost savings. And, um, so this one is a little skewed because the twenty-six point seven, which is the largest, was the NA category. So the two that really stood out from here was sixteen point seven percent in cost savings was capital improvements. And then ten percent was technology, cutting technology savings, and then ten percent of cutting extracurriculars. So as you can see, from one thing to another, they, because of only having thirty responses, they're kind of skewed a little. Um, under the capital recommendations, the three main things were build an auditorium and performing arts center. There were multiple entries of that. Replace the pond building and improvements to the ac- athletic fields and facilities. Other recommendations were increase music, increase STEM, increase learning options for identified gifted and other students with high ability or interest, additional resources for band and chorus, pre-K inclusion, field hockey, increase compensation for staff retention and recruitment, expand VPI preschool programs. And then new and expanding instructional program opportunities um, where music strings, a separate PTA for Aquinton, expand gifted programs at Hamilton Homes, performing art classes and theater history classes, more history classes, structured, um, reading and math intervention during elective blocks, more trade options for KWHS, and then more music programs for Cool Spring and Aquinton. There were a few other, um, items. Um, let me see. Okay. Um, there are a few other items that kind of were like one-offs with looking at numbers of IUPs to student ratios and stuff like that that we, um, that I've worked with Ms. Whittle on, and we're trying to get a hold of some of that with Ms. um, Waldron and Ms. Whittle. But I didn't put those in there because they were kind of very specific. So what questions do you have for me from the survey?
No questions at this time.
Thank you very much.
Um, the only other thing I'd like to just mention is I did get approval from the Board of Supervisors on our turf project. I have, um, got bond council approval. And so, um, on Friday, we started negotiations. Um, and the auditors are out today, so, um, we did receive a proposal on some architectural type design stuff. But with Mr. Stone out, um, when he gets back and the auditors have moved on, um, we will, we will kind of look at that. But we have a tentative timeline, and once I have confirmed that, I will make sure to share that. But at this time, I don't feel comfortable saying that because I don't want it to get out until I can confirm what, what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next we have, um, the proposed school calendar for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven with Ms. Tina Ron.
Good evening again. I just want to ask if you all have any questions, comments, or concerns about our calendars that we've proposed?
I do not.
No, ma'am.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the calendars as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. And the motion carries.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Um, next we have approval of the supplemental personnel report.
I move that we approve the supplemental personnel report as presented.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. And the motion carries. All right, next we have matters of the board.
I have several motions, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The first motion. I move that student number five zero three three five shall be long-term suspended through the end of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year with the placement of impact. The student may request an early return at the end of the second nine weeks with satisfactory grades, attendance, and behavior.
Right, do we have a motion?
I have some motion.
Sorry.
That's a motion. And we're voting on the individual seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. All right.
I move that student five one four four three shall be long-term suspended through the end of the second nine weeks with placement at impact.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. And the motion carries.
I move that student number seven five zero nine two shall be long-term suspended through November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four with the opportunity to continue with assignments until the return date.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. And the motion carries.
And I move that student number five two five two nine shall be long-term suspended through the end of the second nine weeks with placement at impact.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. And the motion carries. Do we have any other matters of the board?
Um, one more, um, just notification, the CX, Special Education Advisory Committee meets on the thirteenth of this month, which is next Wednesday at six P M. And we are now meeting in the library, um, of Hamilton Homes Middle School.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and if there is no additional information or discussion, can I please get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no. And this meeting is adjourned.